Good evening, everybody. This is Steve Lionel, Chair of the City of Nashville zoning board of adjustment. And this is the June 8, 2021 zoning board meeting. As Chair of the zoning board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu because of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4 and extended by Executive Order 2021-8, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, we are video conferencing utilizing the Zoom application for this electronic meeting. Public access to this meeting is also provided via Zoom and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, nashua nh.gov/318/ctv. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to abutters. Instructions have also been provided on the city of Nashville's website, at nashua nh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the Board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the Board and all participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Applicants that are representatives and individuals required to appear before the Board are appeared remotely and are not required to be physically present. They may contact the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if they are unable to use Zoom. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access or by telephone. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments for future meetings via email to the planning department, planning@nashua nh.gov or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and your comments. Letters should be addressed to the planning department, P O Box 2019, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. This is probably going to be the last zoning board meeting that will be held fully electronically for the last year and several months. The next meeting will be at least partially at City Hall, but we'll, please look at the agenda for the future meetings to see what the story is there. The zoning board, the planning department, and city staff thanks you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the National Zoning Code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decisions this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error? You have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for tonight's meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel, I am the Chair. We have Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who is our Vice Chair. We have Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk, Mr. J.P. Boucher, and Mr. Rob Shaw. And let's see, who else showed up? We have Mr. Jay Mancara, who's an alternate. And I think he is our only alternate that is here. Okay. Give me a moment here, get back to my thing. In addition to the Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, who's the Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poirier, a zoning coordinator. And let's see, do we have Matt Sullivan?
Matt's not here.
He's, Matt's not here. Okay. Well, start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there was anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know Law. Mary Ellen McKay.
I am present. I am alone in my home office. Family is home and Bentley is in the, my two-year-old Shih Tzu is in the office with me.
Thank you. Jack Courier.
Jack Courier is present. I'm home alone and I didn't receive an attendance record. I can copy and paste one from last week or if Kate, if you might have one for this week, email that to me, that would be a little faster. Thanks.
J.P. Boucher.
I am present and there's nobody in the room with me.
Rob Shaw.
I am present and no one is in the room with me.
Jay Mancara.
I am present and I'm alone in the room.
Okay, and I'm Steve Lionel. I am present and there's nobody in the room with me. Alternates, Mr. Mancara may fully participate in discussions, but will vote only if a full Board member recuses themselves or if there are fewer than five full Board members in attendance. We've been notified that Courier is going to recuse himself from case number four, so Mr. Mancara will vote in his place at that time. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is one change. The, the last case on the agenda, Teen Challenge of New England, as the owner at 36 Total Street, they're requesting a use variance for a women's overnight homeless shelter. That case has been postponed to our next meeting, which is going to be June 22.
Okay, thank you. So we have six cases.
Steve, before you begin.
Yes.
I would just like to let you know that in case number six, that company did do work for me and the invoice, the contract was signed and money's changed hands April 1st. So I don't know, I mean, I can render an impartial decision, but I wanted to let people know in the interest of openness and transparency.
Fine. Now it's your, your decision as to whether to recuse yourself and you can let us know at that time.
Okay, I probably will not recuse myself. I don't think that, you know.
Yeah, it's not required. If you don't believe, if you don't believe there's a conflict of interest.
No, I don't believe there's a contract, I mean conflict. If I was personal friends with any one of them, there would be a conflict, but I'm not.
Okay, very good. Okay, I will now read the first case into the record. The owner is Veronica Arundel, addresses for Seneca Drive, Sheet C, Lot 976, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 3, to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the lower level of the home. This is in the R9 Zone, Word 5. This had previously been approved at a 2018 ZBA meeting, but the approval expired. I believe they're good for two years. So do we have somebody here to present this case? I see Ms. Arundel, you're here. Please unmute and walk us through your application.
So standard had already an existing finished basement. I'm just adding a kitchenette and I've modeled the entire thing, so I haven't changed any of the layout other than adding the kitchenette and again upgrading to do the remodel.
Is, okay, is, are you, are you done? Is anything more you wish to say at this time?
I, sorry, I don't know if you have any questions. So is it in reference to the actual physical structure or the use of the property?
Well, this is a special exception, which is simply for the accessory dwelling unit. So your application did not include anything about construction? So, you know, there's nothing to talk about there. There are nine points of law that in terms of our conditions that you need to agree to. You went through this the last time, but we'll have to ask you again. Are you familiar with all of these nine conditions?
Yep, I believe that the only one that was in question was any changes to the, to the outside structure to kind of allow an additional entry and I agreed to not to not do any modifications.
So there's no new entrance or exit on the front or frontage side of the dwelling?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, do any Board members have questions? I do have one, one small question. I, when I drove by your house, I noticed that there, you have a garage, obviously, and you have had two cars parked in the driveway. Is there going to be sufficient parking for whoever is going to be occupying the ADU?
Uh, yes, so that right now is representative of all the occupants at this time. Um, the garage is just not in use.
Okay, because one of, one of the special conditions is one additional off-street parking is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house. You, you have that. I, I was just, I didn't know whether there were vehicles in the garage or whether the garage was usable.
Right, there are not. There's just more stuff than I can fit in the house.
Yeah, we've all been. Okay. Very good. So no other Board members have questions for the applicant? Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing any. Is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any. I don't believe we received any emails about this. Therefore, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, your comments?
This is pretty straightforward and I, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application. I did the last time that the applicant was in front of us. Again, pretty straightforward. No visible changes from the outside of the house falls within all the guidelines. And she again reattested her affirmation to the accessory dwelling unit special regulation. So I'm going to support the application.
Very good. Mr. Courier.
I'm in support of the application for the reasons already spoken by Ms. McKay and Ms. Boucher. And I also rely on the wisdom of the previous decision the Board made.
Mr. Shaw.
I likewise am in support and have nothing additional to add.
Mr. Mancara, any comments?
I'm in support as well.
Okay, and I am also in support for all the reasons mentioned. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for Veronica A. Arundel, owner for Seneca Drive, Sheet C, Lot 976, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the lower level of a home. It's in the R9 Zone, Word 4. This was previously approved at the 9/25/18 ZBA meeting and the approval has expired and that's the reason why the applicant is back in front of us. We feel that the, that that is listed in the table of uses. We feel that it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired possession safety. We feel that it will not overload public water, drainage sewer, or other municipal systems. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled in specifically the accessory dwelling unit regulations. Again, the applicant did reaffirm the, those, those regulations. We find that will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of residents. Again, there will be no visible changes from the exterior of the home. And with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. McKay, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Congratulations. That's five to nothing. Your special exception was approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal should somebody care to do so. And you can contact Mr. Falk at the Planning Department if you have any further questions.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to case number two. Owner is Courtney Ross, addresses 27 Bennington Road, Sheet G, Lot 581, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40% permitted, 42% proposed, to construct a 10-foot by 14-foot shed. This is the R18 Zone, Word 2. We have somebody to present the case.
Courtney is on the line.
Okay, yep, you, you were muted, so I couldn't tell and your name just shows this iPad, so.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so walk us through your application, please.
Sure, so I bought a cosmetic fixer-upper in 2017 and I've been gradually chipping away, making improvements to the home. This past summer, my husband and I decided to put in a swimming pool, as you can see on this plan. We also currently, there's a proposed use loosely, like a future illustration of where our garage will be. We haven't even tackled that project yet, but we also have a drainage easement that limits the size of the garage. So right now, we're hoping to get approval for a 10-by-14 sheds. We can store our lawnmower, our snow blower, our pool equipment, and it also is going to act as a barrier to our neighbors so they can't see our pool utilities. Right now, the finished square footage of the house is 1666. By the 40% rule, that would leave us 16, or sorry, 666 square feet for accessory buildings to include the pool. With the size of the pool, we're left with 106. So we're going to be over by 34 square feet.
Okay, thank you. I, I've been reminded that I was remiss in not asking you to state your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. I'm Courtney.
My fault.
I'm Courtney Leveque. Now, we just got married and I live at 27 Bennington Road.
Okay. Any, any further comments at this time?
I don't think so.
Okay. Are any Board members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Courier.
I just wanted to clarify. It seemed to me that this might be the only house on the street without a garage. Is that the situation?
That's correct.
Just, is there, it just kind of almost odd. It almost seems that everything on the street is the same, same-sized properties. It's just that this one doesn't have a garage.
I can't speak to the size of the properties. I mean, they seem relatively the same. But yes, you're correct. It's the only house on the street without a garage.
Okay, thanks.
Other Board members with questions? I did, I did have a brief question. You had talked about wanting to build a garage in the future. Keep in mind that if the garage is not attached to your residence, then you'll have to come back before us for another variance. If it's attached, and as long as you, you meet all of the setbacks, then you, then that wouldn't be necessary.
Yeah, our ideal wouldn't have it attached and that way we're not as limited with the drain easement we have.
Okay. Right, so if the Board doesn't have any questions, are there, is there anybody present with who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? See any, and I don't recall seeing any emails. No, didn't get any emails. Okay, very good. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, any comments?
Again, we, we see this often enough with, you know, with a pool, which, which is something that's not unusual for a home to have. And again, a shed, having a shed is something that, again, is usual to have. And again, we're talking about a small home footprint. I think if they already had an existing garage attached to the house, we probably wouldn't be here for this, for this application. But again, I support the application again because again, it's just, it's just the way the calculations are done, but this lot certainly supports what they're trying to do. So again, I'll support the application as is.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm favorable. And again, I'd mentioned about the garage because just another kind of walk through the street. This proposal doesn't look any more dense or overused. It looks very comparable with the neighborhood. And as Mr. Boucher was alluding to, without the garage, it kind of kicks it over. If there was an attached garage like the other homes, they wouldn't be here. So this, this looks perfectly fine, I think, and fits into the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm in support also. It's a pretty small overage. The house footprint is pretty small to start with. And in this case, also with a lot of the accessory use being from the pool, which is a much less visible and notable structure. I think it's all quite reasonable, so I am in full support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I also support the application, you know, for the reasons stated, the overage is minimal. The size of the shed is also very standard. And I just also note that the house, the footprint of the house does appear to be smaller than other homes in the area. If it were a larger home, the, you know, the overage wouldn't be, wouldn't be an overage, I should say.
Thank you. And I'm also in support also. Ms. McKay, I didn't get you.
That's okay. I too am in support for all the aforementioned reasons.
Okay, and I'm also in support. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
Let's unmute first. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Courtney A. Ross, now Leveque, address 27 Bennington Road for, this is Sheet G, Lot 581. The request is for Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area where 40% is permitted, 42% is proposed. And this is to construct a 10-foot by 14-foot shed and it's in the R18 Zone. Again, I move to approve this area variance. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Quite simply put, the, this house is a relatively small square footage. It does not have a garage, which is unlike essentially all of the other properties on the street. There is an existing pool and this is a fairly standard-sized shed, which is being requested to be added. It only nets out as a 2% overage and I believe that the impact on the rest of the neighborhood will, will not be even noticeable from this. So this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There is no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest. It's substantial justice will be served. And again, I move to approve this area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor and I'm sorry, my audio dropped on the last case. If you could just tell me who seconded that, I'd appreciate it for the record.
Mr. Boucher.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have further comment?
No, I'm all.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance was approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact Mr. Falk at the Planning Department if you have any questions.
Great, thank you, everyone.
Okay. Moving on to case number four. Nope, case number three, excuse me. Getting ahead of myself. Owner is Marion Courtney Kelly Cummings, address 49 Charlotte Avenue, Sheet 59, Lot 75, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31 to encroach nine feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback on Terry Street to construct a 12-foot by 16-foot shed. This is in the R18 Zone, Word 2. Somebody here to present the case?
This is Sean Clark. I'm Courtney's wife. Husband.
Please, please give your name and address for the record.
49 Charlotte Ave, Sean Clark.
Okay, please walk us through your application. I know his, his internet connection did not seem very good. We can't hear you, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm back. My name is Sean Clark and we're, the address is 49 Charlotte Ave.
Okay, just walk us briefly through your application.
So we're looking to add a 12-by-16 shed on the, what is it, the back corner of our property.
Okay. And any, anything else to add that's not in your application?
So when the, the, the reason that I guess the special conditions are, is that the way that our property is shaped, we have a hill and we would have to build up the hill in order to support being 20 feet from the, the Terry Street.
Okay. That it?
Yeah.
For the most part, without going into the rest of the, yeah, the yard that are some uses.
I'm sorry, ma'am, would you just give your name and address for the record? We have to do this every time somebody speaks.
Okay, I am Courtney Cummings, 49 Charlotte Ave. I'm just driving my vehicle, so.
Oh, you're, oh, you're driving. Oh, don't, don't talk to us while you're driving, man. Okay, that's fine. Any questions from the Board for the applicant? Mr. Courier.
I, I was wondering if there was any thought. I, I see the hill and the reason, your rationale about building up if the shed was put back. Was there a consideration for putting the shed in the, maybe I would call the back left corner where it's down the hill? Is that possible?
The reason that we didn't want to do that is we, we actually have a, a five-year-old that we were trying to, we're trying to use or keep space for him to play.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other Board members with questions? Not seeing any. Is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Ms. Whitmore, did you want to speak up? You'll have to unmute and.
Yes, I, yeah, I had to unmute. No, I'm in favor. Yeah, I'm, I'm the backyard neighbor on Terry Street, so. And I'm in favor of it. It's not gonna, it's not gonna impair my property or, you know, in fact, you'll probably give me more privacy from Charlotte Ave.
And. What, what is your address?
For Terry Street.
For Terry Street. Okay.
Yeah, so.
Anybody else on the call who wishes to speak in favor of the application? We did get a, an email in support. I will read this into the record. To members of the zoning board, Jean and Paul Walker of Three Terry Street, neighbors to the Cummings household of 49 Charlotte Avenue, who are seeking a variance during the June 8th, 2121 ZBA meeting, are writing to the board to express our support for the planned installation on their property. We think the board should grant their request for the variance as this improvement to their property does not, in our estimation, adversely impact the area, and knowing them as we do, their efforts will have an aesthetically pleasing outcome for the neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to file our support for the project. Signed, Jean Walker and Paul Walker. Is there anybody on the call with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? I, I heard somebody talking. I don't know whether they intended to speak up for this. No? Okay. Last chance, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? All right. I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, do you have any comments?
Well, you know, from the site walk in the application, I, I did have a concern, you know, with the proposed location, but the testimony by the abutters has allayed that concern. Because to me, it seemed to stick out on, on Terry Street, and, and that was my concern. But I appreciate the comments from Ms. Whitmore, who's on that side, as well as the folks on number three on the other side of the street. So with their testimony that they think it's gonna be fine, I, I leave it, they know the neighborhood better than me, and so I, I, I feel it's okay. But I certainly would like to hear the other comments of the board.
Sure. Mr. Shaw?
I, I'm in support as well, and I think similar, pretty, I have pretty similar thoughts as Mr. Courier does. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mccarroll?
I also support the application, and again, had similar concerns to Mr. Courier. But I, I would also add, given the issue with the slope, but also locating the shed in close proximity to the driveway, it makes sense for the functional use of the property. So I support the application.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I too am in support of the application, the topography. And as Mr. Mccarroll just referenced, the proximity to the driveway. So I fully support the application.
Okay, Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application for all the reasons spoken to by my fellow board members.
And I, Mr. Lionel, also support the application for all of the same reasons. And it's good that there's support for that, from the neighbors. Would somebody care to make a motion? I'll do it. Oh, Mr. Boucher, thank you for volunteering.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Mary and Courtney Kelly Cummings, owners of 49 Charlotte Avenue, sheet 59 lot 75, requesting variance from land use code, land use code section 190-31 to encroach nine feet into the 20 foot required front yard setback on Terry Street to construct a 12 by 16 shed. It's in the RA zone, Ward two. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicants' proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, as stated, simply there, there is some topography challenges or issues on the property. The home sits on a conot lot, so again, there is obviously two frontages on this home. So those are the special conditions of the home. And this shed will, as testified by the, the other closest in our estimation, would not impair her, her property. And in fact, she stated that it would probably provide some privacy for her. We find that it is within the spare and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest. We find a substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. And Ms. McKay, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Congratulations. That's five to nothing. Your variance was approved. Please be aware, it is a 30 day window of appeal. Please contact Mr. Falk at the planning department if you have any questions. Drive safely.
Thank you.
Okay, on to case number four.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
The owner is Sophia and Andrew Paul, addresses 112 Conant Road, sheet C lot 630, requesting variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 10 foot required left side yard setback to construct an attached 18 foot by 24 foot garage and mudroom. This is in the R9 zone, Ward nine. Is there somebody here to present this case?
How you doing? Andrew Paul, 112 Conant Road, here with my wife Sophia Paul.
Okay, thanks. Walk us through your application. Tell us what you want to do.
We're just adding to the mudroom in a garage to encroach on the five foot into the 10 foot variance line on the driveway side. Yeah, to the left of the house. It's a really probably a one day garage with a mudroom, four foot mudroom.
Okay. It's pretty simple. That it?
Yep, that's it, sir.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mr. Courier?
I just wonder if you could clarify how wide the proposed bay is and how wide the mudroom is on that.
Mudroom is four feet, and the garage will be 14 feet.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, why the selection of 14 feet? I'm just wondering about the possibility, just as the board looks at any way to minimize an incursion, where did, where was the 14 feet?
It was measured off my wife's car with the doors open. The length is 12 feet, not fully open, but like that, that first or second opening. Allow us to get in and out of the car without dinging a wall or be able to get stuff in and out of the garage.
Okay. All right, that's it for now. Thanks.
Any other board members with questions? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak in favor of this application? No. Is there anybody on the call with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, I'm not seeing any there either. So that I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw, do you have any comments?
I'm in support of the application. This is, you know, garage is certainly a normal feature of a house like this, and to add that space, I think is reasonable. It's the only reasonable place for, I think, the garage to go. And I think we got a reasonable explanation also as to the 14 foot that's being requested for the width of the garage. So I, I find support for this application.
Thank you. Mr. Mccarroll?
Did you lose? I was just support the application. You, you gave me a right.
Yeah, yeah.
I, 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 I think for the, really the same reasons, the, for a one bed garage, the width that they're looking for is really not inconsistent with half of many of the garages we see. You know, in terms of the 14 feet, 28 is not a common 26. And the mudroom also, I think, is reasonable, and it does appear that this is really the only side of the house you could put it on. So I support the application.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I too support the application. Size doesn't seem like a too huge of an issue, and I like the idea that they actually opened the car doors to make sure you wouldn't ding the door. Well, I think we all have done that a time or three, so I really like that thought process.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application for the reasons spoken, spoken to. And I also note that when looking at the property, it seems that the neighbor at 110 is in a similar situation. If not, they're very close. You know, same idea, their garage, the way the house was situated in their garage. So again, I think it fits in, and I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I support the application. I, just as Mr. Boucher was saying, I used to live right in this area. And over the years, several of the homes on this stretch of Conant Road have, have added structures or garages. And as this property currently exists, it's really one of the smaller ones in the neighborhood. And I, I think this addition, while cutting into the left side yard setback, really isn't, is not out of character with what's existing in that stretch of the street. Right now, I also wanted to get that on the record. I see that as a special condition of this also. So I'm in support.
Thank you. And I'm also in support of the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for Sophia E. and Andrew R. Paul, owners of 112 Conant Road, sheet C lot 630, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 10 foot required left side yard setback to construct an attached 18 by 24 garage and mudroom. It's in the R9 zone, Ward nine. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicants' proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, the home is situated more to the left side of the property. And the addition of the garage and a mudroom is a reasonable addition to the structure. We find that it is within the spare and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect the property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find a substantial justice will be served. So again, we, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, will also vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. As I've said to others, please be aware, there's a 30 day window of appeal. Contact Mr. Falk at the planning department if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moving on to case number five, and for this case, Mr. Courier has said that he is recusing himself. So Mr. Mccarroll will be voting on this case.
I just want to jump in here and say, I, do we want to have Ms. McKay record this? Or do you want me to record the notes on this? I, I think it could go either way.
I, I don't see a problem with your recording.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
If you're recusing yourself, just, you know, stop your video and, you know, but you can listen in and, and take all, take the notes as, as normal. We'll try to give you, well, you'll be able to see everything.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, case number five. Owner is John Paul and Stephanie Morgan. Address is 4 Shelton Street, sheet B lot 1362, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, item three, to construct and attach 26 foot by 26 foot two car garage with accessory dwelling unit above. This is the R9 zone, Ward nine. Somebody here to present the case?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Morgan, and I'm at 4 Shelton Street.
Okay, proceed.
All right. We are looking to build a 26 by 26 attached garage with a 676 square foot apartment above. We're looking to have a kitchen in that. My parents are retiring and want to live with us, and by providing them with an eating kitchen, they can continue their independent living and have the support that they need. Because we'll be right there.
Okay. Are you familiar with the nine special conditions for an accessory dwelling unit? And do you agree to those?
We do. We are.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Not seeing any. Anybody present with, with who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Let's see, this is for Shelton Street. We did get an email in support. I will read it into the record. Good evening. My name is Maggie Ringy. And my husband and I own 1 Shelton Street in Ashwa. We received the notice of public hearing for the special exception being requested by Stephanie and John Paul Morgan of 4 Shelton Street. I am not opposed to the special exception being granted and the Morgans being permitted to construct the two car garage with accessory dwelling unit above. It is my opinion that the construction of this building will not have any detrimental effects on the neighborhood, and I believe the special exception should be granted. Okay, I think that was the only email. Let's see, just, yep, that's right. Is there anybody on the call with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Mccarroll, since you are voting, you start off first with your comments.
I support the application. It seems very straightforward. It, it appears to meet all of the requirements, and they seem to understand what those are. So I'm in support.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I too am in support. It's very straightforward. She assented to all the special exceptions that go with an ADU, and so I am in support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application. Again, very straightforward. The, the application was for me complete, understood what she was doing. And I support that. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
I also in support.
And I am also in support. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owners John Paul C. and Stephanie L. Morgan at 4 Shelton Street, sheet B lot 1362, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, number three, to construct and attach 26 foot by 26 foot two car garage with accessory dwelling unit above. This is in the R9 zone. It is listed in the table of uses as just noted. There's no indication or expectation of to be any creation of undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Likewise, there should not be any overloading of public water drainage sewer or any other municipal systems. By testimony, the special regulations are fulfilled, and it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health morals or welfare of residents. For those reasons, I move to approve the special exception.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, also vote in favor. It's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your special exception is approved. Please be aware there's a thirty day window of appeal. Contact Mr. Falk at the planning department if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number six, our last of the uh, and Mr. Courier will be will be back voting for this. The owner is East Otterston Properties LLC. The applicant is Turn Cycle Solutions LLC, address twenty five East Otterston Street, sheet eighteen lot ten, requesting use variance from land use code section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, item one forty nine, to construct a new sixty foot by eighty foot contractor's office and shop without outdoor storage on the eastern portion of the property after proposed lot subdivision. This is in the D three M U zone ward seven. Somebody here to present this case?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening, and my name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Prunier and Pearlman here in Nashua.
Address?
Twenty Trafalgar Square.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and I am here on behalf of Turn Cycle Solutions with a liability company, Mike Turkott's company that also operates out of Nashua, operates on East Otterston Street, currently operating out of the Nasi Plumbing Building. Mr. Chairman, I have to I may have to ask the board's indulgence because to my left is another laptop where I am due to speak to the Board of Alderman tonight. I think we should be okay. They seem to be running a little late, but I may have a simultaneous hearing. You can join me at the Board of Alderman if you like, but probably not. Mr. Chairman, what we have for you tonight is Turn Cycle Solution is looking to subdivide the twenty five East Otterston Street site and renovate the existing brick building that's there today and install a new contracted building. And Kate, if I may, I'm going to come back to this plan, or maybe I'll yeah, okay, let's start with that if we could, please. This site is a large odd shaped site on East Otterston Street. It currently contains the Vertical Dreams Climbing Facility and the Mill Yard Brewery. It also contains an existing brick building that is not used today that Turn Cycle Solution hopes to use as their applications go forward. The goal is to have a shared parking lot with shared access between the two lots. In addition, we're going to clean up and tighten up the Pond Street access. Right now, directly the lot's kind of a mess. It's just a wide open area between the Pond Street and the big parking lots there today. We hope to clean that up with with you can see we're going to make a regular driveway coming off of Pond Street to access the proposed warehouse. You should know that while Turn Cycle Solutions is actually operating out of the Nasi Plumbing Office, they have been using this parking lot as temporary parking for their trucks and their vehicles. You know, right or wrong, we're not ducking that issue. They have been using this site without formal site plan approval, but we hope to make this right. We hope to get this squared away with both this board and the planning board. So we are looking to upgrade the existing building, bring it up to code, and install the new building. Turn Cycle Solutions has been in business for since two thousand nine. They currently have eleven employees, and that may grow a little over time. They operate normal business hours, Monday through Friday and some Saturdays. They have four box trucks, four pickup trucks currently of deliveries to their site, and they're roughly one to three box trucks a day. No, excuse me, a week. And they're, you know, typical contracting service. They are a general contractor with they specialize in energy efficiency insulation for residences, and their trucks load up in the morning and go off for the for the day off to the job sites. The some of the trucks do get parked currently at East Otterston Street. Some of the trucks go home with employees. You can see that we would be adding landscaping to the site, both along East Otterston Street, and really supporting and adding to the buffer with what little is there today. The we have an odd lot that has a long history of commercial and industrial uses. And Kate, there's the Voldemort's site plan. If you go to that, you had it up at first. You can see that this there was a warehouse at this site. I'm not sure when that came down. This Voldemort's site plan that was proved, it was proved, I believe, in the nineteen nineties or it looks like nineteen ninety seven, and at that time, the warehouse was there. Again, I'm not sure when the warehouse came down, but we see we seek to simply be replacing that warehouse with a forty eight hundred square foot warehouse shown on our plan that came with the application. We have a, I think it's very fair to say, a mix of commercial uses where the proposed use is not allowed because it's in the D three district. In the D three district, if you look at the criteria of the D three district, which I'll highlight in a minute, it's really designed for like a main street, streetscape. When we look at the criteria of the B three district, but I took an inventory of all the businesses and the mix of uses and the all the various uses that don't fit the D three in this East Otterston Street neighborhood. And Kate, that was the that was the G I S plan that I submitted, and I had typed written on the various uses. We could go to that, please.
I'm gonna look for that. Okay.
Okay, so what so what what I did, Mr. Chairman, is that I took an inventory and I prepared a G I S, and we typed on all the various uses and I won't hash them all out, but we have everything from a Walgreens to bottle gas, the propane facility, to a car repair shop, to Southern Hampshire parking lots. There are at least four of them right on East Otterston Street. We have a bait shop behind us and a large parking lot for a bait shop. So my point, and you know, we have the the pub across from us. Nasi's Plumbing is directly across from where we want to operate. My point being, these collection of uses really in and of themselves do not fit the D three district, and we would be fitting right in with all those various uses. So I'm hopeful Kate can bring that up. In addition, Chairman, we had a number of letters of support from the neighborhood. We had one from the owner, and I'm not sure if those made their way to you.
We have some. We have one from, let's see, it says from, well, that's that's not.
Okay, okay, so there's. Thank you, Kate. So we have, you know, just a wide, a mix of various uses. And again, I appreciate the intent of the the D three district to really create the main street and sidewalk streetscape, but that really doesn't fit this particular neighborhood. This is almost a kind of a leftover neighborhood from various uses. So that's our site that's highlighted. We again, we have Walgreens, we have the Office Medical Building at two eighty Main Street, Smokers Haven. For those who go to Smokers Haven, we have an office, a old school vending facility right next to us. And again, and then we have some residential uses to our east. We have the resident family and multifamily, then again, auto shops and Tim's Custom Speeding Auto Shop as well, so. I believe we fit right in with what we're proposing with with our proposal to the neighborhood. I don't think that we're going to be in conflict with the neighborhood, and I hope that helps. And again, I have handful of letters of support from the neighborhood that the board should be should be aware of and consider as part of the record. Watching the Alderman, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, do you is that the end of your presentation, sir?
Well, just just about. I don't want to rehash my application, but I believe that the contractor shop will not be contrary to the to the public interest, given the this neighborhood. We believe that we will be meeting the spirit of the ordinance because we will be in character of the neighborhood, and we will be meeting the D three criteria as much as possible. There's a letter here from Corey Hebert, the owner of the land, saying this is excess land to him. So we have we would have substantial justice in favor of the owner without any adverse effect to the public, and we'd have a substantial justice certainly in favor of Turn Cycle Solutions. We don't see that we're harming any property values, and finally, Mr. Chairman, we believe we have a hardship in this case because the D three district really does not fit this portion of East Otterston Street or East Otterston in its entirety, really. And so we believe we have a reasonable use, and to prohibit the use would not be fair and substantial to this applicant. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would ask if Mike if Mike Turkott could weigh in, if he correct anything I may have said or any further comment. But I have nothing for other other than to answer questions for the board.
Everything is right. I started my business in two thousand and nine in Nashua on Main Street, and we've grown, and the nucleus of my business is based in Nashua. I was born and raised in Nashua. I moved all over the country to come back here to run a business. Two thousand and twelve, I was voted Young Entrepreneur of the Year from the Small Business Administration in New Hampshire. I was the president of the Home Builders Association. Where we are as a business, we're operating in a a bootstrapping application out of two eighteen wheelers. I'd like to get rid of those eyesores and move into a place that we call home and stay and dig in in Nashua for the next twenty five to seventy five years, or however long I live in on this business is my hope.
Mr. Turkott, would you give your address for the record, please?
I apologize, sir. My name is Michael Turkott. I live at three eighty five Woodcrest Court, Manchester, New Hampshire.
Thank you. I've been notified, Mr. Shaw is recusing himself from this case, so Mr. Mancara will be voting here. Any questions from the board? Mr. Mancara.
If I could just ask the applicant to explain the nature of the business, I heard a little bit from attorney problem, but I'm still a little bit unsure as to exactly what the business is.
Yes, sir. So in two thousand and nine, I started an energy efficiency company specializing in insulation. We run a similar company to like a quality insulation, but on a smaller scale. And then we also have an additional division that is the General Contracting Division as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? No. Okay, is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
Hello, my name is Luke Saroy. I live at four sixty nine Mass Road in Manchester.
Okay, go ahead.
I too stand in favor of the the company's growth. I'm an employee for Turn Cycle, and I'd like to see the the property across the street become our new home. Let the place get cleaned up and make that, I guess, kind of not so pretty section of Nashua, just revitalize, I guess, to, you know, help that that corner lot, I guess.
Thank you. Did I ask you your address, or did you give it to me?
Yes, I spoke it out.
Okay, that's all right. I'm told that you did.
Okay.
Memory is the second thing to go. Anybody else on the call who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Attorney Pearlman, well, I mean, this is that that's not quite your turn turn to speak, but we did get some letters. Let's see.
Thank you. That's what I was getting to. Thank you.
Okay, so we have three, I believe, three letters, and this first one, let's see, this is, okay. As a neighboring business of Turn Cycle Solutions, we feel that their proposed move over to twenty five East Otterston Street would increase presence and increase the aesthetics of the neighborhood as the brick building has been vacant for a long time. With this opportunity, I feel Turn Cycle Solutions will continue to flourish if they were given the opportunity to continue to grow their business in the Nashville community, and that is what it is all about. I have reviewed the plan and think it will be a great improvement. Unfortunately, I cannot read the name, and there is no address on here. It simply says Property Manager of Main Street Marketplace. But I cannot read what the name is. I have a second letter. We have reviewed the plan proposed, and we support Turn Cycle Solutions and their proposed move to twenty five Otterston Street. We love the guys and will be a great move for their company's future. Please permit them access to continue to purchase the building. This is signed by Tim's Speed and Custom Owner Joseph against, maybe that's Mr. Sora that was speaking. I get that. No, I don't know. Who do you think that is? Yeah, I can't quite make it out. Okay, so there's a
Unfortunately, to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, when these people wrote their name, they they signed it basically with a signature, so I apologize. Each one of these businesses, I just went in and talked to them, told them, showed them what was going on, and if they were in favor, I just asked them to write a letter and sign it.
Can you supply the names?
I can get them for you. I don't have them off of off my off my fingertips. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. We
I'll be happy to provide them to the board, though.
Yes, that would be helpful. Okay, so we have the third one here. National Community, we have watched Turn Cycle work diligently to maintain the parking lot and adjacent areas to keep the neighborhood looking good. For a long time, that area on Otterston Street was an area that was very unsafe for children and local community that walks to use the services of the Shaw's Plaza due to drug users finding it a safe haven due to the overgrowth of vegetation in areas of the parking lot. Since Turn Cycle has been at Otterston, they have cleaned vines, cleared vines, trees, and other debris to make it open and allow for high visibility, which has dramatically decreased the undesired uses of that area previously taken place. For Mike, the owner, and his teams to find a new home within the same area would be great. They're going to keep the neighborhood safe and keep up will always be there for us if we need him them as they have for the existing owner and the previous owner. Please consider the impact this business will have the daily. I don't understand that. The plan that is proposed will make a positive impact. Please approve. This is signed Dean Baxter, Mill Yard Brewery, twenty five East Otterston Street. And we have another one. Please use this as my support to approve the plan to have Turn Cycle move across the street to twenty five Otterston. They do a good job keeping up with the lot and the area, makes a good guy and wants want to see him succeed. This is signed Thomas Edelman, owner of Pub Granary. And I have another one. As a neighbor of T C S, we have watched Mike and his team continue to grow. We'd like to advise that they will continue to grow if given the opportunity. Please approve their plan proposed. Let's plant a seed for this company to grow in the local community. Otherwise, they will move along and grow in another community. Now is the time to make an investment in the next generation. And this is signed Norm Wren from Bottle Gas Inc., and there is no address given. I believe that's all the letters that we received.
There's one more.
Is there one more?
It was in a separate email.
Oh, yes, yes, I got it here. Okay. Let's see here. Here we are. Thank you. To members of the board, my company, East Otterston Properties LLC owns twenty five East Otterston Street. I also own and operate Vertical Dreams Inc. I respect excuse me, I respectfully ask for your support of Mike Turkott's variance request. The eastern half of my lot is excess land that Vertical Dreams and Mill Yard Brewing rarely use. The lot is unusually large for the area. We have ample parking on site even when Vertical Dreams and Mill Yard Brewing are both busy. We will be sharing parking with Turn Cycle, which we don't expect will happen often. Allowing Turn Cycle's proposed subdivision will put otherwise excess land to good use. This is signed Corey Herbert Hebert, excuse me, from East Otterston Properties. Hebert, excuse me, uh, from East Otterston, uh, properties. So I think that's all. Okay, um, is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak with questions, concerns or opposition to the application? I am not seeing anybody. Okay, in that case, we will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And again, Mr. Mancara, uh, will be voting in place of Mr. Shaw. Uh, Ms. McKay, any comments?
Um, I'm in support of this application and it seems that, um, numerous abutters or business owners also support the application. Um, it does seem to be in line and in character with the existing businesses. And, um, again, like most of the people stated in their letters, um. It's not time to stop business growth. It's time to, um, encourage and support it. And so I fully support this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application. Um, I, I think, um, again, what's one of the, one of the compelling, um, points that were made by the applicant again was the, um, um, showing us the different types of uses that, that have been on Otterston Pond Street for many, many years. And so I believe that this, uh, use will fit right in, um, especially on that Pond Street side, uh, where you know, that would be most impactful. So again, uh, with all that, um, I am supporting the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm in support of the application. I just wanted to reaffirm that I, I concur that it's a really wild use of different businesses and residences on Otterston. In fact, if, if Mr. Proman kept going beyond Walgreens all the way down to the school, there's still this kind of, uh, odd odd, I guess I call it, different uses. Uh, so I completely agree that, given that uh, special condition, it's reasonable for this proposal in, in this zone. And I also wanted to say that, uh, I felt that this side of Otterston Street, I mean, especially before the climbing wall went in, you know, was, was kind of sketchy. There were times that, that my wife and I didn't go to Pub Granary when the Pub Granary parking lot was full because she was uncomfortable parking across the street. I don't know if we were supposed to park across the street. But I feel if this side was cleaned up, it's really, uh, an uptick for the neighborhood. Um, and also, you know, sitting on this board for a long time, I found that when, when there's like what appears to be a dedicated business owner for the growth of his business, that's always been, uh, uh, you know, over the long haul, uh, you know, that's always been a good thing and it's followed through with the commitment. And, uh, I, I appreciate Mr. Turkot, you know, being on the call and providing his opinion versus say just the attorney because, uh, I, I have faith that he'll follow through. And, uh, I, I, you know, make a, a, a real uptick to this part of the neighborhood. I'm, so I'm in full support.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
Uh, I also support the, uh, application, really for all the reasons stated, given the character of, of the area. This is really very use, a reasonable use of the property. And we just also note that the applicant's actually operating in this neighborhood now as our other contractors. So it's, it's very consistent with the use, the fact that we had some strong support from some surrounding businesses and indication uh, that this running businesses, the abutters also see this use as compatible with the area.
Thank you. And I also support the, uh, the application, uh, for, uh, all the same reasons, the strong support from the neighbors. Um, it's a, a good use of, of this property and it does seem consistent with, uh, what's around it. Uh, so would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance for East Otterston Properties. LLC owner, Turn Cycle Solutions, LLC applicant, twenty-five East Otterston Street. Sheet eighteen, lot ten, requesting use variance only on use code section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, number one forty-nine to construct a new sixty by eighty foot contractor's office slash shop without, uh, without outdoor storage on eastern portion of property after prop, after proposed law subdivision to the D three MU zone ward seven. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposals to property, given the special conditions property. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant pursuit other than the variance. Again, um, we find that, um, this property, this existing property, uh, has been there for a long time. Um, there have been some different uses. There was a, uh, existing warehouse that had been taken down at one time. Uh, we find that this proposal will definitely enhance the neighborhood. We also find that special conditions are is that there are, um, very varying uses of properties in the area and that this use will fit in uh, with this, um, neighborhood with this, uh, property. Um, we find that it is within a spare and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect the property values of strong imposables. We find that it's not contrary to public interest. We find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I'm making a motion to approve the use variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Ms. McKay? Thank you. Uh, any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lina, also in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your variance is approved. Uh, Mr. Falk has the comment. You need to unmute, sir. You, you're muted, Carter.
I didn't do it.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Turkot.
Thank you.
Approval. I guess I'll be talking to Andy quite a bit in the near future about planning for submittal. Cause that'll be upcoming next, so.
Sir, from, from the bottom of my heart, I really do thank you all for this opportunity and I won't let you down.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much and congratulations for making it through the Zoom life. And, uh, I look forward to seeing you in, in person in the near future.
In the near future, yes.
We will. Take care of you. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, so Carter, tell us about next meeting. Well, but, but before you do that, let's, we have, we still have some business to do. Okay, we have two sets of minutes. So we have minutes from May eleventh and May twenty-fifth. So did anybody see any, uh, anything, any issues for the May eleventh, uh, minutes? No? Okay, and, or about May twenty-fifth? Well, no, we got, we got it. Sorry, we got to do this. Do this by the book. Okay, uh. Oh, I will make a motion to approve the May eleventh minute, minutes, uh, as is. Do I have a second? Uh, I saw Mr. Boucher's hand first. Everybody was raising their hand. Okay, uh. Uh, Ms. McKay, uh, how do you vote? To approve. Okay, Mr. Courier.
Uh, Mr. Courier votes to approve the May eleventh minutes.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw.
I'll vote in favor.
Now, I, I also vote in favor. Okay, so now it's the May eleventh minutes have been approved. May twenty-fifth, anybody see any uh, edits or anything to change in the May twenty-fifth minutes? No? Okay, uh, I will make a motion to approve the May twenty-fifth minutes. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you for your second. Um. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
I wasn't there, so I will abstain.
Okay, uh, Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Uh, and I also vote in favor. It's four, uh, four, zero and one abstention. Uh, so those are approved. Um, do we, we do not have, do we have an agenda for the next meeting, Kate?
I think we do.
Sent it to you today.
Um.
Right. No, I sent you the agenda, not the
You sent us the Zoom meeting, but I didn't see an agenda.
Me that, just put that up for you.
Uh, oh, no, excuse me, yesterday. No, let's see.
Be the June twenty-second meeting.
Yeah, we got the Zoom notice for that.
We got, we got the amended agenda for tonight, but that's, that's not, that's not.
Yeah, and I, I sent you the twenty-second agenda about ten fifty-three.
I don't.
I didn't. I didn't see it.
No, I'm not crazy.
And I, I, I haven't, I have a, a Zoom invite, but I don't, I don't have an agenda.
I know I'm not crazy.
You said you sent it about ten fifty-three, so let's see.
Two agendas today. I sent you the twenty-second this morning and then later on I sent you the eighth amended.
I did not get it. I'm looking at all my email and I don't see it.
Yeah, just scroll to that one, Kate. That's fine.
I know.
Okay, so the first case is the, uh, postponed, the postponed one that we had tonight.
We got a special exception. Uh, sign variance.
A couple for signs.
Another in-law apartment, um.
Drive.
Another sign variance, driveway variance. And a subdivision request.
Okay, uh, does anybody see any regional impact on these? I, I don't see anybody suggesting there's regional impact. I don't think we have to vote on that. Uh, in that case, I will entertain, well, no, no, now, now Carter can tell us about next meeting.
Um, well, I guess everybody knows that the governor's executive order expired on May twenty-eighth. Well, fourteen days past that, so as of June twelfth, we can now meet in person at City Hall. And I, I'm, I have heard that that is a wanted thing by administration to get back to more of a normal pre-COVID situation. So we will have the next meeting in room two oh eight. The auditorium will not be available to the zoning board or the planning board until, we're guessing towards the middle or end of July because they are retrofitting the city clerk's office. So the clerk's office has moved upstairs to the auditorium temporarily. So when they're done with the clerk's office, office will move down where they belong and we'll have the auditorium again. So we have room two oh eight. Now, I'm sure all of you have been in that room. It's much smaller than the auditorium. And we're still concerned about social distancing and how many people are going to be in the room. So our thought is, is just to have, you know, possibly just a few ZBA members there and some can still do it on Zoom. We still will have the Zoom component. So, uh, we're just thinking and I guess it's up to, up to the board if you wanna have maybe the chair and vice chair and the clerk come to room two oh eight and the others can do it on Zoom. So it'll be just like we're doing it now, except three or four of us will be in room two oh eight. So that's the initial thought.
Carter, uh, unless I'm wrong, I, I believe we do have to have a quorum physically present.
That's what I was gonna bring up.
Yeah, that's why we thought have the, the chair, the vice chair and the clerk. That way we'll have three, which is a quorum. So that'll satisfy the quorum requirements and, you know, everybody else can, can just do it, um, from home like they have been. It's only going to be this way for a couple of meetings and so we have the auditorium back. And then, you know, there'll be a lot more room up there for all of us to come. So it may be one meeting, it may be up to three at the most. So it's a little bit of a transition for all of us. Um, we're telling the same thing with, to applicants. Applicants can still attend the meeting via Zoom. They also can come in person if they choose to. So we're not gonna kick anybody out.
We must allow the public to attend if they want to.
If they want to, but we'll give them the option. If they want to do it in person, we will invite them in and they can do it like we did pre-COVID days. That's no problem at all. Or if they want to do it by Zoom, we have, there's now two or three large TVs in room two oh eight and the IT department is um, arranging that room so that we can do it via Zoom in that room.
So Jack, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I, I was actually planning on being out of town at this point at the June twenty-second meeting. So if possible, I'd prefer to zoom in.
You could do that, yeah.
And, and have, uh,
Jack is our clerk, so we need, we would need the third person in attendance.
Well, let me throw in something because I'm going to be out of town the month of July. And so I was doing Zoom, um, and probably gonna be in the same town as Jack.
Yes, we need three people to sign up.
Rob and JP, I mean, I'm, Jay, whoever wants to, um, I'm all for that. I can zoom in, but, um.
Well, it, Jay wouldn't count for that unless there, unless we didn't have one of the full board members in attendance. Right, because we need three three, well, three, three voting members in attendance.
Just a quorum. Oh, I think it's just a quorum three.
Quorum is three.
Yes, but we need, it's, it's three voting members, right?
Yeah, but wouldn't JP and Rob and yourself be three if Jack and I couldn't do that?
Yeah.
I, I think that would work.
So JP and Rob, do you think you can manage that?
I need to think about it.
Okay, well.
And I'm gonna throw another wrinkle in too because of SB one oh eight passes. Um, it's going to committee a conference now that is going to enable all boards, commissions, meetings, municipalities, committees to meet via remote access um, in compliance with ninety-one A, public right to know. And so the attorneys are watching it now, but committees, the conference will be done within two weeks. And so we all have our fingers crossed. I would love to see that bill pass.
Right. It won't help us for the next meeting, though.
No, unfortunately, Jay, you're right. It will not help us for the next meeting.
So for the I will be here in July, but I won't be here for the next meeting.
And I won't be here in July.
But you'll be here, Mary Ellen, for the
I should be here for this meeting, the next meeting.
How about JP for the next meeting?
So, so I'm, I'm, uh, fully available to go to City Hall. Um, that's fine with me. Uh, I'm all good with that. Um, I had, I had a comment about that, which is passing my mind. I know this is all confusing for everybody. I, I think Carter, I, 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 um, I, I have no problems with, with, um, with going anywhere. I, I've been working crazy since all this started, so I'm kind of used to the social distancing and all that and um, I have a problem with that, but you know, we're in a, we're in a different phase now. So whatever you guys want to do. I think the issue is, I, I think, you know, uh, where I find in my employ is that when we try to, uh, we've been trying to do these onsite meetings. I think there, we don't force people who are uncomfortable at this point to, to, uh, come if they can remote in. So I think, uh, the question is really is, um, at this point, until the auditorium is available, um, I would just maybe throw it out, um, just the thought that, um, maybe, um, uh, you know, the possibility of if, if it's really becomes, uh, uh, an issue or whatever to get that quorum of the voting members, the full-time voting members. Um, maybe we just, you know, maybe at this point, if it doesn't work, we just see if we can continue this way. Um, maybe it, it creates less you know, less issues and maybe that couple of weeks. But I guess, again, you're following direction from administration, city administrations. Um, but I'm just throwing that out there because, um, I understand where Mr. Shaw's coming from, may not be comfortable for whatever reason or not available. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there. Uh, but again, I'm here and I'm available come City Hall.
We, we can't, we can't do an all online meeting going forward without the governor's action. Maybe what Mary Ellen talked about is different, but right now we will be required to do the in-person quorum.
Um, we as staff are gonna call all the applicants and strongly recommend or encourage them to do it by Zoom. However, you know, if they really want to come to City Hall, they can, but we've been talking to quite a few people lately, even like the next upcoming slate They can, but we've been talking to quite a few people lately, even like the next upcoming slate of applicants. And most people still want to do it on Zoom. They, people like that. You know, they don't have to get in front of a of a board, you know, with the podium and the stage and coming into another building and. You know, people, people still like the Zoom option. So. You know, we'll give people the option, but we're gonna, we're gonna recommend at least. For the first couple few meetings that they do it on Zoom. So. It may just be, you know, three ZBA members, myself. And that might be it in room two oh eight. Kate's going to do it from her home and Matt's not going to come in. So or he'll do it from his home. So it'll just be one of us. And I agree, I, you know, I I have concerns or I guess we all have concerns with the. You know, way of the world right now about social distancing and things and. You know, I I still wear a mask in City Hall. A lot of people still do, even though they're not required now, they're encouraged. So wear a mask and do our social distancing and no shaking hands, things like that. We'll all do the best we can to keep up with those. Those issues. I mean, we all have, we all have concerns about that, so. Fortunately, after work, there's really not many people in the building. I'm not sure what the Board of Alderman meeting is going to be done or how they're doing theirs yet. A lot of this is new to us. They're, they'll be probably in their chamber, their chamber. I walked through it today. It looks like it's all cleaned out and ready to go for a meeting. So I think they'll be meeting in there. I'm not sure if they're gonna do the same thing with some of them showing up for a quorum and then some of them doing it by Zoom. I bet they probably will be.
Yeah. They're gonna have enough for a quorum and.
That's about it.
Yeah.
It is, I I don't know which room is two away. That is the the closer to where the community planning department is.
Yeah, like when you go up the back stairs, you kind of. As soon as you get up to the second floor, like from the back stairs, you. Can only go one way. You go towards the left and the office is right there. There's signs there now, but just go in the back door, go in that that back set of stairs. Go up the steps and it's really like right around the corner.
Okay.
It's not a big room, Steve. It's kind of small. We meet HDC, the historic district used to meet in there. But I agree, I prefer Zoom, so I concur with everybody that would would rather stay home. I, you sign me up.
Yeah, I would too, but. Well, we'll see what happens, Jack.
I just wanted to chime in that that's where I spent a lot of time on the Conservation Commission in room two oh eight. Nice little room when you want to be cozy, but it is a big table in there. And boy, it's hard to. Social distance is very different from what we're used to in the auditorium. There's a lot more space in the auditorium.
They took out the table.
That table's gone.
Oh, that's helpful.
The big table's gone and all the chairs were that would ring around that whole office. Room, they're all gone too.
Oh, okay. That makes it a little more roomy for sure.
Yeah, it's a lot more spacious now.
It it really is. They painted all the walls. They put the the large screen TVs. I think there's two or three of them there now. It's really updated. They did a nice job on it and.
Are there no tables at all? Or I mean, did?
There's one in there now, a big round table that used to be in the mayor's conference room, but it's on, it's our understanding that they're going to take that out. Sometime this week and they'll have a table for for three or three or four people. On the long wall, so we'll all be a minimum of six feet apart and I'll sit in a desk over the corner somewhere. So we'll all be. We'll all meet our social distancing issues.
I I'm assuming most of us have been vaccinated. I certainly have.
I got one down, one to go, so I'm getting.
Going down, you didn't tell me.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I got one down, one done. I got the other one to do. So in a couple of weeks, I'll be all set, so.
I was one and done.
Okay.
I was one of the later ones, but.
All right, anything else?
If I hear anything different, I'll be sure to let everybody know, but that's the latest and greatest news we have from administration and.
And I'll let Carter know about SB one oh eight because I am following that. It's important.
That'd be interesting.
Okay, so now I can make a motion to adjourn. Second, Mr. Shaw. And I don't think we had to vote on that.
No, you can adjourn. You don't even need to make a motion, Steve.
Okay, well, all right, eight oh five, we are adjourned.